Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Uh, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Littoral. Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. I hear a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Littoral.
Second. Have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Littoral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Turn this over to Councilmember Van, please, for...
Would you rise for the pledge of the American flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. If you could stay standing for a moment and bow your heads. Dear God, thank you for making each of us such unique individuals with so many talents, and thank you for having so many of these talented individuals in Beaver Creek volunteer and provide their talents to make our community better. I ask for your guidance as we make decisions tonight. Watch over each of us as we do the best we can for our city. Amen.
Thank you. Please proceed. Well, we have the pleasure tonight of having several pre-scheduled presenters. So, we need to approve an agenda. We have one before us. Any comments?
I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. All right, our pre-scheduled speakers this evening start with Soyn and Green Memorial Hospitals, and I believe the man, Mr. Dodge, is gonna be the presenter tonight.
Absolutely.
Hello there.
I assume it's okay if I comes forward, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Well, my name is Rick Dodge. It's an honor to see you, and it's an honor to be in front of the council. I'm gonna give you an update on our hospitals. It's nice to know what's going on just right down the road and what's going on in our community. And so, I believe you each have some documents in front of you as well. I'll reference them a few times, but we'll try to keep the numbers more towards stories as well. You know, as we look overall at the difference the hospital makes, we've got lots of numbers in front of us, but really, it's about the people. And the people in our organization are absolutely phenomenal. You're looking at individuals each with stories in the community, and we probably each know someone who works at the hospital or is associated with the hospital, and just really amazing people. But the numbers do tell us one thing: that we are making a difference in the community. You know, we see over 11,200 people in the emergency room in 2017, just from our community right here in Beaver Creek. That's a significant amount of individuals who would've otherwise left the community just a few short six years ago. It's amazing, six years ago, what the difference has made. And so, when you look at Green Memorial Hospital, people from Beaver Creek still travel over to Green as well to receive their services during certain situations. Even during an emergency, when we happen to be in a part of the county where we're in charge of the healthcare needs of the community, it's important that we have that solution available in both sides of the county, serving western and eastern Green County. We're often asked, "So, how are the hospitals doing?" And as you can see, the hospitals are doing, I believe, in meeting the mission of our community. And in meeting the mission of your community, you really wanna make sure that you're focusing on the right things. Focusing on advancing services, and as you can see by the tower that we have graciously come before the council on before and been working with a number of members of your team on, that tower is gonna be important for us well into the future. That's gonna be adding a number of beds, but it's also gonna be adding a number of services. I'll highlight some of those here in just a little bit. We have over 1,300 individuals who serve as employees between Soyn Medical Center and Green Memorial Hospital. So, it really is incredible to see that, you know, those individuals in the community many a times call Beaver Creek their home. And we've actually increased pretty significantly by the number of employees in Beaver Creek over this last little bit. So, I believe some of the individual endeavors of the council and some of the other city leadership has certainly worked on that. Residential solutions have been promising here in our community, so that's fantastic. We are in the seventh year of operation, and that includes, that actually brings us to a new tower. And that new tower will serve as, we're gonna have a brand-new ICU in there. That ICU is gonna be encompassing of a number of things. It's gonna have state-of-the-art care from an intensivist who brings a lot of wealth and knowledge, but is also gonna be bringing some technology as well. We'll have state-of-the-art booms that'll be right bedside, as you traditionally see in an OR, so you can have easy access to the headway, which will allow us to do a little bit more complex critical care and keep things right here in our community a little more often. So, as you can see, that's pretty much our mantra, and you'll be starting to hear about it. Care close to home, it's really what you're starting to see of Soyn Medical Center. So, that's fantastic. And we really appreciate the confidence the Beaver Creek Township Fire Department, Chief David Vandembos, in our emergency departments. I gotta tell you, we see them there often. We appreciate that, and we appreciate all the support of the community that traditionally has really, truly become like friends. Many of our nurses are married to someone who works in the city, whether it be a fireman or a fire lady, and so, there's just lots of synergies that exist between when you have a community like this. These statistics reflect a number of things, but it's really clear that both hospitals are needed, so as you can see right in front of you. Now, I'm just gonna highlight a few things. We've got two Level III trauma centers. Level III trauma means a lot when you have to go through a survey. It's a week-long, it's a pretty significant survey where you're going through validating by the American College of Surgeons, making sure that there's a halo effect coming from quality in our community from those Level III traumas. And that really gives us a big halo effect for quality overall. We've got a maternity center right here in Beaver Creek. Our surgery continues to advance. We have four Centers of Excellence. The first one is a minimally invasive gynecology Center of Excellence. We also have a hernia repair. We have robotic surgery Center of Excellence, and we have minimally invasive surgery Center of Excellence. So, we've got those four Centers of Excellence. What that helps us to find is this pre-interoperative and post, we've got clear processes and standards that we make sure to adhere to. And that's a great thing, 'cause that means care close to home as well, unless people leaving our community, and it really is making a great difference. We do have a nice robot over there. It's a friendly robot, don't worry. We've even got some other robots that are around as well, that are actually, we're using robots to transport linen and supplies now as well. Helps take care of our employees' backs. So, across our hospital, I can tell you, I had the opportunity to speak with one of our medical transport people this morning, and I said, "How are those robots doing?" And besides the Wi-Fi, you know, Wi-Fi is responsible for everything. I don't know. So, Wi-Fi even in hospitals, if it's even spotty in one spot, those robots don't like it. So, we've gotta make sure that Wi-Fi is working on point everywhere we go. So, when you look at Green Memorial Hospital, it continues to serve a great difference. A Level III trauma center, state-of-the-art emergency, and our emergency is actually the highest patient satisfaction in the network for our emergency care out there at Green Memorial Hospital. Some of the things that we focus on at Green Memorial, in addition to the great cardiac services, the heart care, the Level III trauma services that we do, in addition to all the other great services that come with the community hospital, the city really needs us, and that community really needs us as well. And it's a little over 100,000 outpatient encounters that we have at Green Memorial Hospital. And between Soyn and Green, we have significantly more than that. We actually have a new state-of-the-art at Soyn Medical Center. I wanted to announce it, 'cause I don't think we've had a press release yet on it. We have 128 slice CT machine coming in, which means a little bit, it's faster, less time underneath of that machine that you probably, no one likes to be under, and so, it's much less time in order to do that. Pictures come out much cleaner. So, my chief medical officer's a radiologist, and I gotta tell you, anytime you can get a nice picture to him, it's just, we let him out of the dark every once in a while, but he does a good job, and absolutely phenomenal guy. In addition, we have opened up our radiation therapy center at Soyn Medical Center. That radiation therapy center was certainly needed, and what that allows us to do is to receive your treatments for medical oncology, and if you have radiation therapy treatments that would be necessary, to stay in the same place, in the community. The last thing you wanna do during those treatments, from personal experience in our family, is travel. And so, having that care close to home is yet another mantra that you're gonna see of ours. That additional radiation therapy was actually close to 80% capacity after 77 days. So, it's needed in our community, unfortunately, and we're happy to be able to provide that state-of-the-art care. So, at Green Memorial Hospital, we do have some pretty important dates coming up. We do offer a number of great services on Green Memorial, but we've been supported through a partnership with the levy for quite some time as well, and that's issue number five. I gotta tell you, and it's not a tax increase. Jeff Brock, if you've heard him in the community, will tell you, this is not a tax increase. It is a renewal levy, something that we depend upon and is vital to continue those life-saving services. Green's emergency department serves almost 23,000 people a year. It was the first hospital that's, when you look at women's services, it was the first hospital in the community in Kettering Health Network that had the 3D mammography services available to it. So, when you look at that care close to home, even for our residents in Xenia, it's really important. That levy is responsible for a number of things. We've renewed this levy for almost 25 years, and we continue to depend upon it in that community. Green serviced a number of individuals, and we will continue to play a vital role, particularly as we are one of the healthiest counties in Ohio for Green County. Really, truly is important for us to continue, and this is not a tax increase, maybe costing property owners about $15 annually per $100,000 of property value. So, really, truly, for the amount that it does, it really does play a big part in making sure we can continue those life-staining, sustaining vital services for Green Memorial Hospital. So, I just wanna thank you for your time, the residents of Beaver Creek, for allowing us to service them and to serve them in a great manner. We'll continue to advance healthcare in this community through a partnership and through the great work that's already been done, and we'll continue to build on those shoulders. But it's only through people that we really make a difference, and that's why making sure to support our great physicians and our great employees, we'll continue to make sure that's a top priority. So, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for me, ma'am?
Anyone?
I'm just, I wasn't quite sure from what Jeff said, is there a tax increase?
Yeah. So, just wanna clarify. I'm really glad that you heard that from Jeff, 'cause there is not a tax increase.
Okay.
So, it's a renewal levy.
And with the cancer center, at the main campus of Kettering, they integrate some other services for patients, so that, are some of those integrated services going to be offered in Beaver Creek?
You've got it. So, that's our plan. So, as we continue to multiply, overall, it's nice to have a hub-and-spoke model that we continue to do, and Soyn is turning into more of a hub than a spoke. And as we continue to integrate and operate, we'll continue to advance services very similar to some of the services that Kettering has advanced into. Actually, we're about 95% there of what Kettering can offer, we can offer right here at Soyn Medical Center.
It's so complex when you have a horrible disease like that, and for the integrative services to be provided locally is really a treasure. Thank you for all you do.
Absolutely. My honor.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, council.
Next on the agenda, we have a presenter. Green County Department of Jobs and Family Services, Beth Rubin, Director.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to come tonight and speak to you for a few moments. I'm Beth Rubin. I'm the Director of the Green County Department of Job and Family Services, and our office covers a wide variety of programs, including adult protective services, child support, workforce development, and protective children's services. One in four Ohioans is connected in some fashion with our office in a year's time, whether they're looking for a new job, or navigating nursing home care for a loved one, or calling about a vulnerable neighbor and asking for help. Our work impacts families, businesses, the local economy, and the community as a whole. But tonight, I'm here specifically to talk about our largest program, which is Children's Services, and our local levy, which is issue six. It's a 1.5 mil renewal levy, no increase, no new taxes. We are designated by law to provide for the care, protection, and placement of abused, neglected, and dependent children, and we work to protect children from abuse and neglect through a variety of programs: safety assessments, foster care, adoption, kinship care, and independent living programs. Last year, we served over 2,000 children in Green County through prevention, protection, placement, and permanency programs. 228 children received placement services, and 40 children were reunited with their families subsequent to placement. Another 33 children were placed in the custody of other family members subsequent to placement, and we finalized a total of 15 adoptions last year. We currently have over 140 children in the agency's custody, which is a pretty high number. 32 of those children are in our permanent custody. Five are in adoptive placements awaiting finalization, and 27 are available for adoption. Now, while Job and Family Services relies on state and federal funds to run the majority of its programs, Children's Services is different and unique. Local levy funds make up 63% of our operating budget, and in addition, we rely on these local levy dollars in order to access state and federal dollars through reimbursements and matching funds. As I mentioned, we're seeking a renewal of an existing 1.5 mil levy for five years. It's issue six. It will not increase taxes, and the levy's sole purpose is to support Children's Services. The funds are spent solely on the protection of children in the community. Child abuse and neglect affect everyone in the community, and we need to act now to maintain current programs to keep our most vulnerable citizens, our children, safe. We believe it takes a community to protect a child, and with your help, there is hope. I thank you for your time tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone have a question, comment?
We really do value having a resource to help children in need, and with the opiate problem in the region and just other dysfunctional issues, it is so important that we can trust you to provide valuable service to those children. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Next up, Green County Council on Aging, Karen Peterbell. Hello there.
Hi.
Executive Director.
Glad to be here. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I was thinking back to the first time I came before this illustrious group and some of the people who were in the audience, and sadly, who aren't maybe with us any longer, but their spirit is with us, so. I am Karen Peterbell, the Director of the Council on Aging. I know all of you are very familiar with some of what we do, especially in relationship with the senior center, but I know not everyone in the Beaver Creek community, especially who might be seeing this broadcast in the future, are. Just as my two colleagues have shared, we are also on the ballot for a renewal of, we are issue seven, and that's for the Senior Services Levy, first passed by the voters in 1999. And one of the things I like to share is that even though our name is the Green County Council on Aging, we're actually a not-for-profit organization. So, we came out of the community, the community decided we needed to do something years ago to support our growing senior population, which has yet to slow down just yet, and so, that's kind of where our roots come from. But our current Senior Services Levy, which is 93% of our budget, generates about $5.5 million, which of course is quite a bit of money, but we're able to utilize those dollars all over the county in a variety of ways. Our largest service program is Partners in Care, where we serve 1,100 seniors a month with some type of service or support, whether it be home-delivered meal, homemaker service in the home, help with a bath, adult day services, grab bar installations. And actually, right now, in the Beaver Creek community, we have 309 seniors that we are personally connected with through that program. So, like I said, 71% of the dollars go to that program. We aren't able to provide every service that people need. Some of the situations are far more than we can handle, so in those cases, we might be helping the senior, the family, look at other options, look at assisted living, nursing home care, just walking with them in the journey, 'cause growing older is something we all aspire to do, but not everyone has the same level of capacity or resources to manage that like their neighbor might. So, that's one of the reasons that we are here. 21% of our dollars actually go to the senior centers in Green County. There are 10 wonderful centers here. Obviously, we have a fabulous one here in Beaver Creek. They just, they're really our rock stars, as you all know. One of the things that we are honored to do is we have a page in their newsletter every month, so I hope you have an opportunity to read that when it either hits your email or your desk. And so, that's a way for us to share about programs and what's going on. Through our relationship with the center, we have a care manager who actually is at the center twice a month, just there to help with questions on any variety of consumer issues or what have you. We do a monthly luncheon learn. We just had a wonderful one on Friday. We've actually had to kind of scale back how many people can attend to that, 'cause they were getting so popular, and we were running out of room, and we didn't want the fire marshal to show up, so. But that's a good challenge to have. We also have an office space here in Xenia, which is 3095 Dayton Xenia Road, which is the Dark Brown Building, actually owned by the Kettering Health Network, that we're honored to actually be there rent-free, expense-free, which is a wonderful gift to us, but then it gives us that physical presence here in Beaver Creek, which is so very important.
What's the address of that again?
It's 3095. So, it's the Dark Brown Building. That's where Feed the Creek is, so that might be the most recognizable tenant there, if you will. So, we're thrilled to be a part of that partnership. In terms, again, with the senior center, we actually provide, for 2019, they'll have received $234,000 in grant funding, which will be for their transportation program and for operations, and they are also up for, we, every year, we provide funding for 80% of a new vehicle for the transportation programs that are operated by the four senior centers. And 2019 is Beaver Creek's turn, and my understanding is they are ready, willing, and able to utilize those dollars. So, that's something that we're very proud to be able to do. 5% of our budget goes to a variety of educational and support programs. We work with grandparents raising grandkids. Some of our critical issues are memory loss and dementia, which is something I imagine all of us have a little twinge of nervousness about, Parkinson's Disease, fall prevention, and even though we are a very healthy community, we actually have a very high percentage of falls for the older population in Green County, so something, we're trying to have some level of impact, one of which is providing grab bar installations to help with a little bit of a safety net in the bathroom. So, anyone who's watching this, who's a Green County resident, who's 60 or better, we will come to your home and we will put grab bars in your bathrooms at no additional charge, 'cause you're already supporting us through your, through the levy. And then, 3% of our budget is for general administrative expenses, so 97% of the dollars go to services and programs, so we're very, very proud of that. We have a nine-member community board. Two of our members are from the Beaver Creek community. We have 160 volunteers, and we have 24 part-time and full-time team members who do an awful, an awful lot. I do wanna mention that right now, we're in the middle of Medicare open enrollment, and I know not everyone in front of me, right here in person, are Medicare-aged, but I'm sure many of the people who are watching this are. And we just encourage you strongly to make sure that you or your loved ones get your Medicare options reviewed, to make sure it's a good fit for you. Every year, the plans change, and I will share, just real quickly, a scenario that we experienced, and this hopefully is an exception, but it might kind of spur some people on. We had a wonderful senior who we've worked with for many, many years, and she called this year and said, "You know, I'm having a tough time. I have some health issues. My husband's in rehab. He may not be able to come home. I'm just overwhelmed. So, let's just stick with the plan I have, we have now for next year, and everything will be fine. They've done well." And we said, "Well, you know, we'll still do some checking. We'll do whatever you want us to do, but we'll still do some checking." If she had stayed on the plan that she has now, which is working for this year, because of her diabetes and her, she has a number of breathing challenges, her cost just for medication in 2019 would be $33,900. That's real money. You know, that's nothing to sneeze at, and we were able to find a plan that is gonna cost her $3,800 a year. So, again, hopefully, she's an exception, but it's something that we all need to take note of, again, whether it's for you or for a loved one or someone that you care about. But as I said, we're hopeful that the community will decide that issue seven is worthy of a positive vote, and that we can continue to provide good service and support to Green County seniors and caregivers and community members, and of course, to the wonderful Beaver Creek Senior Center.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? I'm looking forward to that new vehicle.
Okay. I am too. Yeah, we're thinking about putting the council's picture on the side or something like that. I might kinda jab at it.
Put the name of the driver on there.
Or not. Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And next, our own Police Chief, Chief Evans.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you and the residents about the very important police operating levy on the November 6 ballot. It is a 4.5 mil renewal continuing levy. It is a zero increase in current taxes. So, again, I wanna remind the residents, issue 10, zero increase in current taxes. This does represent 62% of our funding for police operations, so I would ask you to think about that a moment and see how that would impact you if you were, that impacted your own personal situation, or if you were a business owner, how you would continue to operate losing 62% of your funding. This would maintain current staffing of sworn police officers and communications operators, and as you know, we, our mission statement drives working in partnership with our community. And we have a lot of programs that we do that, and just a couple of those I wanna mention because they would be impacted by this levy. Our School Resource Officer Program, our DARE Officer Program, our Crime Prevention and Neighborhood Watch Programs, our Community and School Safety Programs, our Citizens Police Academy, which basically educates our residents on what we do and why we do it, and our Citizens on Prevent and Patrol Program, although that's a volunteer organization. I have one of them here this evening, Don Adams. There is cost associated with that program, even though they are volunteers, and it would be impacted if the levy did not pass. Some of the other things that would be impacted are continuing our crisis intervention and de-escalation training for our police officers, which you all know how important that is, maintaining our accreditation program, which we've been involved in since 1999, and we were re-accredited in 2016 with excellence, and we're one of only nine agencies in the state of Ohio to receive that distinction. It would allow us to continue our drug enforcement efforts to reduce the flow of opioids and dangerous drugs into our community. It would allow us to continue to be a member of the Regional Emergency Response Team. The continuing portion of this, I wanted to speak a little bit about. The reason that's important for the resident, it preserves the 12.5% tax rollback on their property taxes, and that would be permanent with this being continuing. What it does for the police department is it provides stability and funding for us, and I will point out that since 2011, we had about 20,600 calls. In 2017, we completed the year with over 30,600 calls, a 51% increase in demand for our police services. We're on pace for over a 10% increase between last year and this year. So, the demand for our services is not going down, it's going up. The cost of equipment, vehicles, and personnel is not going down. So, this is a very important levy for us to maintain the stability in our operations and maintain the current services we provide to this community, which we take a lot of pride in. So, again, issue 10, no increase in current taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. What was it you said? No increase?
Well, actually, I learned that from Jeff Brock at all the forums I was at. I just followed Jeff Brock. It's no increase in current taxes.
All right, thank you. Any comments, council? All right, we'd like to thank all the presenters that were here this evening, and thank you for your input. Before we move on, I'd like to recognize two Boy Scouts that came in, came in to join us this evening. Can you come up and introduce yourself? Tell us what troop you're from. Give us a name.
I'm Rishi Mankala, and I'm from Troop 71.
All right.
I'm Ariane Desarapu, and I'm from Troop 71.
Okay, are you fellows working on a merit badge tonight?
Yes.
And it is?
Citizenship War, two actually. Citizenship in the Community and Communication.
All right. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your attendance. When we're finished, if you're still here and you have any questions for any of us, please let us know, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, public hearing, PC 18-11.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing an update to the zoning code.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council.
Good evening.
As we customarily do, we take a look at their zoning ordinances every once in a while, whether it's a routine revisit, or if it's a practical reason for us to go back and look at it, or if there's an issue that council finds important and we wanna address quickly as soon as possible, and that happens to be the case this evening. The main zoning code changes that were driven as a, for this process, was the prohibition of medical marijuana dispensaries, cultivation sites, processing facilities as well. So, as you'll see, the majority of the, the main change in the zoning code is to prohibit those, but also, we talked to Steve and Amy about how we, how we may account for the existing one that we have, so you'll see some language there for the one that's been So, you'll see some language there for the one that's been approved on Tonawanda, how that would be handled should they ever outgrow the site or need to transfer within. They have to be there for 12 months before they can transfer, but there is some language here that deals with that, should they choose to do that. Most of the other changes are pretty self-explanatory. We do have some language related to small cell facilities. You know, there's been a lot of discussion on that lately. A lot of the regulations will be in the general ordinances, not in the zoning code. We're really dealing with the private property side of things. I know Mr. Mormon in the engineering department has worked on some, with the attorneys, some language to how those be regulated within the public right of way. But you'll see on the table permitted uses, that kind of looks a little overwhelming with some of the uses we've taken out of there. They just were getting really too specific, so we wanted to come back because, you know, people look at something that's very specific, and then they assume that since there isn't specifically listed, that it's prohibited. We tried to take some of those out and put them into the general retail category or the restaurant category. So, that's why you'll see a lot of the strike-throughs. It's not necessarily saying they're not permitted, it's just lumping them into a broader category so we don't get too specific to where people inferring that it's not listed, it's not approved, or not allowed. But with that, this is the first reading, so if there's, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this hearing, please come forward, give us a name and address. Anyone want to address council tonight? Seeing none, we will move this on to council input. Councilmember Curran, would you like to start?
I have nothing, Your Honor, right at this point.
I'm rep.
Just one quick question on 158-104. Sorry, Jeff, and this is really specific. I apologize. I was read through, so we have hut steals, inflatable garages, portable garages, temporary garages, but then we add temporary sheds and tents. I mean, isn't a tent just by nature temporary?
Yeah, it's, again, it's the situations that we run into where, you know, unfortunately, if it's not listed there, it's something we, some we've looked at this, we put it in there. Some people are using tents for sheds, you know, and necessarily, we don't have regulations for tents. I mean, we don't have a problem if you put a tent and camp in it overnight with your kids or whatever, but once it starts getting utilized for lawnmowers and gas cans and everything else, it's one of those things, just safer to have in there than not.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was more for the residential or the commercial district.
Residential for the most part.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I had.
Councilmember Van.
I have no comments tonight.
Councilmember Rushing.
None here, sir.
Councilmember Littrell.
No comments, sir.
Vice Mayor.
No comments.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, this is the first reading. Do I have a motion to move this ordinance on to the second and third?
Yes, move. Second.
I have a motion to move ordinance 18-25 on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinance 18-19.
This is the third reading of an ordinance repealing current Chapter 97 Trees, Weeds, and Shrubs of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adopting new Chapter 97 Trees, Weeds, and Shrubs of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances.
Thank you very much. This is the third reading, so we've had its public hearings already. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Littrell. Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, ordinance 18-20.
This is an ordinance adopting new Section 96.38 Small Cell Facilities and Wireless Support Structures of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances, and passing as an emergency.
Thank you. Okay, we've had our public hearings on this ordinance. This is the third reading. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Van. Any discussion?
Hearing no comments, I would move for approval of ordinance 18-20 Small Cell Towers and call for it to be an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-20 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes, thank you. Next, ordinance 18-21.
This is an ordinance repealing current Section 13213 Panhandling of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Once again, this is the third reading. We've had our public hearings on this ordinance. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Littrell. Any discussion?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-21. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinance 18-22.
This is the third reading of an ordinance to prohibit the right turn against a steady red signal for southbound traffic on Haynes Road at the intersection of Dayton-Zenia Road during school hours.
Thank you. Again, this is the third reading. We've had our public hearings. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Upton. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'd move for approval of ordinance 18-22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-22. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinance 18-23.
This is the second reading of an ordinance rezoning 3.5 acres from R-1A and B2 to CPUD 18-3, further described as Book 2, Page 11, Parcels 140, 141, 144, 145, and 146 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Now, this is the second reading, so this is a public hearing on this ordinance. Is anyone present tonight that would like to address council on ordinance 18-23? Please give a name and address, please, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Bob Gage. I'm with GBT Realty out of Nashville, Tennessee. We are the developers for the proposed project. Basically, same as what you heard at the last meeting, 9,100 square foot Dollar General, 36 parking spaces, associated drives and utilities, along with detention facility. Be more than happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anyone?
At this point, it is just for zoning, and when the building comes through, it'll be a separate ordinance.
Correct. Anyone else? All right, this will naturally then move on to the third reading. Thank you. Next item, ordinance 18-24.
This is the second reading of an ordinance repealing current personnel rules and regulations for the City of Beaver Creek and adopting new personnel rules and regulations for the City of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. This is the second reading again, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on ordinance Seeing none, we will let this ordinance move on naturally to its third reading.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On the small cell, look at the ordinance. If there is a small cell, there's no emergency pressure, so if somebody will make a motion...
Someone will make a motion to reconsider it, I will read it so that you have emergency because I'm, it's...
We did, the motion included as an emergency.
Well, but the problem is the rest of the ordinance that I have in the packet does not have that.
Language, any language.
What? Yeah, there's a paragraph missing.
Okay, so you need a reconsideration for 18-20?
Exactly, please, and then I'll read what you need.
Do I have a motion to reconsider?
Mr. Mayor, a motion to reconsider the cell tower, ordinance 18-20, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reconsider ordinance 18-20. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, sir.
Yes, Mayor and Council, if you would so make a motion to amend this as follows. In the caption, it will say, "And declaring an emergency," and the bottom section, number two, will be revised to say that this ordinance is hereby declared an emergency for the reason that to allow the immediate implementation of these regulations to address small cell applications that may be filed by providers, and to allow an orderly application process and regulation of small cells, applications, and facilities in the City of Beaver Creek.
Would someone like to incorporate that language in a motion?
I would move to approve ordinance 18-20 with that language. We did discuss that language during work session.
That is correct.
It is just that in what was attached to our packet, that paragraph was overlooked and not included.
It's a 30 day.
It was not included.
Yes, that's the only change. It's a typical 30 day.
But in the title that is in the agenda, it also says it's an emergency, so I think our intent has not changed, but clarifying that language is very important. So, I hereby move that we reconsider ordinance 18-20 to include that language.
Let's do this in two steps. Let's change the ordinance to include the language, and then we'll make a motion to approve as an emergency. So, I need a motion to approve the language as read for ordinance 18-20, and you've made that correct.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the language in the ordinance of 18-20. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, I would need a new motion to approve as an emergency.
I would move to approve ordinance 18-20 Small Cell Tower legislation as just approved and declared an emergency.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-20 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. And scouts in the audience, that's a good example of how we have to do things the proper way, and sometimes, our legal staff has to tell us we have to back up and try things over again. All right, that's what we just did. Next, liquor permits. Chief.
Mayor, I have a request for a new liquor permit for Faux District LLC doing businesses Faux District. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control notified us of a new D1 liquor permit request for Faux District LLC doing businesses Faux District, 4474 Glengarry Drive, Beaver Creek. That is in the green. The records checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were conducted on the business officer, shareholders for this application request. Staff is recommending this application. Move forward with no comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the mayor's report, and if you guys don't mind, I would like to defer. I don't have my list put together yet, but it's short anyway. Can we move on to council time? Councilmember Van, would you like to start?
The only thing that I wanted to tell the public is to remind them that the Beaver Creek Women's League hosted a forum that allowed all the candidates and issues to be presented, and it was videotaped by the city and is available for preview on our website. So, if you're trying to get more information about the candidates and issues, just an introduction to who they are and what they're about, it's a good research resource, and I would urge everyone to vote in the election.
Thank you. Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to, again, congratulate the five inductees to the Beaver Creek Hall of Fame. The Alumni Association held our 13th Distinguished Hall of Fame ceremony this past Saturday. Thank you to Mayor Stone and Councilmember Curran for attending, and for all those to celebrate our great five inductees to the Hall of Fame. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Littrell.
I would just like to thank the city, our paving people have done a wonderful job. I know it's in the city manager report, but I was on Indian Ripple yesterday, and it was wonderful. And on my way to city council this evening from work in Fairborn, I came across Grange Hall, and it's another wonderful. The roads are absolutely fantastic, so for those of you that are on the list, I think you'll look forward to this, and it, wonderful job. Very smooth. The other thing I'd like to say is the touch-a-truck back, gosh, it seems like it's been a couple weeks ago, on the 12th, I believe, or the 13th of this month. Excellent, the city and parks and all of the individuals that were there. I was only there for just a little bit because I had to go to the Sauerkraut Festival, but it was a wonderful event, and just, the city just does such a great job, Parks Department, the trucks, and all the equipment was great for the kids, so, great event. And then, I do want, one thing that I remind myself every day as I'm driving to work, I want to thank all of our representatives that support Wright-Patterson Air Force Base because as the city, or, excuse me, that is the largest single-site employer that we have, and every day when I go to work and I see all of the individuals that support the mission of the Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, and all of the contractors, and all of the independent people that work there, it's just such a blessing to have that in our area, and I really support and help, I really appreciate the support that our legislative people do, because without Wright-Patt, we would not be the city that we are with a lot of our businesses. So, I just want to thank them for all of their diligent work there, and that's it.
Well, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Just kind of to piggyback off Councilmember Littrell, I was at the Tri-Truck event a few weeks ago, and although it was cold, we still had a great turnout. The kids had a lot of fun. The bouncy house was a nice touch for the kids. I think once they made their way around all the trucks, there was a huge line at the bouncy house, so they enjoyed that. I liked that the waste management garbage trucks seemed to be the biggest hit for everyone. I don't know why the kids love the garbage truck, but that was the biggest hit. And I think a close second was the police department with their shields that Officer Brown brought. So, he told me, he said he's going to definitely bring the shields to more events because everybody wanted a picture with the shields. I didn't see any ramming with the shield, so everyone safely was able to take their pictures. But it was a really good event, and I was able to help out at the Parks and Recs table. We got some really good feedback from residents on the master plan, just getting some input. We noticed, Aaron and I made the observation that we got a lot of different feedback at this event for what parents and kids thought were most important than at other events. So, I think it was a good diverse group of people talking about what they want to see. The splash pad was a big one, disc golf was a big one, so I think those were definitely two areas that were underrepresented at other events, so it was good to see the community come out, and everybody was really excited to talk about the Parks Department, so, just overall, great event.
Thank you. How about Councilmember Upton?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Stone. Couple quick comments tonight for me. I recently had the opportunity to participate. If you remember, we had Mr. Beck out recently talk about Creek Safe. I participated in their golf, foot golf scramble a couple weeks ago.
Oh, yeah, that was, what was it?
It was a fun event. It was cold in the morning, but I warmed up throughout the day. A lot of families out there, I was really surprised. You know, I think a lot of times we think of golf outings being more for adults. This foot golf outing was, I mean, kids of all ages were there, and I got beat by a little girl in the long kick contest, but that's okay. She deserved it more than I did. But I know they hit their goal recently on fundraising, so they are installing some locks at some of our local schools, and congratulations to Creek Safe, and appreciate all the hard work for the community. Secondly, I'd like to discuss a little bit tonight about Issue 9. This is our last public meeting before Election Day, and as some of our citizens are going out to vote, if you are in the city, you will see Issue 9. It is not a tax levy, no new taxes, I guess is the theme tonight, but it is a couple of amendments to our charter. One of the issues being presented and asked to vote on is lowering the required number of signatures from 75 to 50 to get a candidate on the ballot for city council or for mayor going forward in 2019 and beyond. This kind of brings in, I think, in my opinion, a little more in line with some other communities that, and even county-wide and state office holders have lower requirements to get on the ballot than what we require for the city council. So, this would make a little easier ballot access for folks wanting to be on council or mayor. And the second part of the Issue 9 is clean up a little language that created a council election in an even-numbered year. You know, I think we've all been to civics courses, right? School board, council, township trustees, they're elected in odd-numbered years. State representatives, governors, senators, they're in even-numbered years, yet our charter, just by some wording, allows, in some cases, an even-numbered council election, which is a little confusing, I think, to voters. So, this language cleans up. Some of that does not eliminate every, every instance where it could happen, but it does clean it up, so it would happen less frequently in the case. So if you have any questions about issue nine, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to take the questions and answers, but that's a little bit about what issue nine is tonight. Thank you.
Counselmember Curran. Yes, I would, ditto. I think Councilmember Rushing mentioned about essentially the same things, but I enjoyed being at the alumni program at Beaver Creek High School, and then we went over to the truck issue. I enjoyed the presentation on the new weather truck that WHIO has, lots of high-tech stuff, and Christie Santini was willing to spend the time trying to move the kids through that were stacked up to sit in the seat and see things. Very, very exciting. All right. And if you don't mind, I'm going to pitch in now. The, a couple of things. One is, you mentioned the mission at Wright Pat. I had the privilege of being out there Saturday morning for a new mission. They have a new organization, the 655th and 755th Intelligence Wings, and they are there to sup, as reserve units, they're there to support NASIC. So it was really interesting, they unveiled a brand-new mission flag, I mean, a whole new unit, so it was a fun place to be. Charles and Ryan and I also hosted some Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts here last week, and those of you that might have a little wobbly pad on your microphone, but anyway, they, they really, really did a nice job of passing ordinances right here. They sat in our seats, and they, each one of us took turns of walking them through an issue, and so they had a wonderful time, so thank you guys for, for joining me on The homecoming parade was a big success. I don't know how many of you, many of you saw it, but one thing that I saw that I did not, was not aware of and probably should have been, but Beaver Creek High School has a junior ROTC program that I knew they were trying to develop, but I didn't know it had been developed. It's an Air Force Junior ROTC. They have 110 members. They marched up in front of the, the parade. It, hopefully, there's, some of those members are going to join us Veterans Day at the memorial for the event. Again, Tri-Truck was fantastic. And lastly, it's just November 6th, right around the corner. Don't forget to vote. We'll move on to city manager's report.
All right, Fox Run Park had cleanup this past weekend, I believe, and 31 volunteers throughout the day showed up. There was two different shifts, so we wanted to thank all of those who volunteered. They cleared honeysuckle from the creek line and trees. The trees were cleared, that will turn into a tree walk, and with that tree walk, there'll be, the tree advisory board members will be posting plaques with the tree name and information on the tree itself, so that, that's pretty neat. Did want to specifically mention a couple volunteers here. Of course, the neighbors from the Fox Run neighborhood, Girl Scouts troop was there, Beaver Creek Youth Council members. Stu Moats, he is owner of Three in One Tree Care. He's also a tree advisory board member. He donated his crew's time, provided lunch, and provided the bulk of the equipment to the cleanup.
Wow.
So, you know, I think that's worth mentioning, so thank you, Stu.
What's his last name?
Moats. M-O-A-T-S. Stu Moats. So thank you very much for that. That, that, that's what it's about. So thank you to everybody who assisted with that. You know, the honeysuckle, if anybody's had to clear any of that, that is not fun. It may smell good, but that's about it. Road closure, Ridge Cliff will be closed the week of November 5th for a culvert replacement project. If you, this is a west side of Darst, down south of Indian Ripple. There's plenty of roads to gain access, but just, just as a reminder to those living in that neighborhood, this closure is estimated to be 30-day calendar days, so it's going to be a long way. Luckily, it's pretty easy to take an alternative way around, and thank you for your patience and this time, and anybody that has any questions that lives in that neighborhood right there, 427-4413, 427-4413 is our engineering department, and we'd be glad to answer any questions for you. Further construction updates, Shaker Town Road has been reopened to traffic, yay, within our timeframe, 14 days, they got at it, and of course, we had, we had good, pretty good weather, so that was good. Of course, remember, Shaker Town Road widening project there at Grange Hall, that will, you know, begin more and continue into next year, so that, that project is just beginning for that, so, but it's going to be a, a great improvement. Nighttime paving, Councilmember Little mentioned this, we had Indian Ripple County Line to Savannah has been progressing, repaving, and they had updated the center islands, the concrete worked first, and then repaving all that. It should be completed by the end of this week. That's very wide, you, you understand why they're doing it at night, because Indian Ripple by the green is crazy even at night to do that, but it's better than trying to do that during the middle of the day. But that project is almost done, so we're glad to hear that. Next, we have the convenient drop-off locations for prescription drugs. That'll be happening on Saturday, October 27th, so this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. No liquids, no needles, please remove pills from packaged materials, but this is going on from Green County, Beaver Creek, Fairborn, and Sugar Creek Police Departments. Turn in your unused expired medication for safe disposal, and of course, we're all, also collecting flags that, for proper disposing of old American flags, so please bring those in, 10 to 2 this Saturday. Want to mention Halloween, I think everybody knows, we celebrate it on the actual date, October 31st, 6 to 8 p.m., and just, you know, a lot of things are common sense, but sometimes we get too excited and caught up in the moment. We, as parents, can, but you know the children do, so please walk safely across the street at corners, trick-or-treating familiar neighborhoods, do not trick-or-treat alone, go with parents and adult friends, carry and use a flashlight, glow sticks, be seen by cars, your outfit may not be visible, but please carry something that's very visible. Never go inside a stranger home, no matter if they offer you all the candy in the world, don't do it. Only visit houses that have lights on, including outside porch lights. So some good safety tips, just remember, please be safe. Be scared, but be safe, right? All right, and lastly, tonight, the Veterans Day Memorial is coming up, we just want to, everybody please put this on your calendar, is on a Sunday this year, Sunday, November 11th at 2:00 p.m. It's going to be at the Veterans Memorial Park at 1911 North Fairfield Road. This year, we are very, very honored to have Colonel Thomas P. Sherman, who is the 88th Air Base Wing Installation Commander at Wright Pat. So we bought, brought out the big, the big gun, so to speak, of this year, so very proud to have him at the ceremony as our speaker. Parking's available on Fairwood Drive around, and Nazarene Church as well, and for those that needing assistance, a lot of people like myself and my wife will bring our little pop-up chair, but for those that don't have that, there is limited bleacher seating, so, and of course, lawn chairs are welcome. Other than that, see you there.
All right, thank you. At this point on the agenda, this is citizen comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address counsel on any issue at all? Don't want to tell us a thing. All right, in that case, we'll move on. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.